I'd like to call our meeting here to order this evening here for October 22nd, 2018. If I could, if anyone has a cellphone, please kind of turn it off. It goofs up the taping. And if everybody's a green light after that, if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Mr. Wallace. Okay. Philkins.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Bunce.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Bauman.
Here.
Fent.
Here.
Putman.
Here.
Thank you. At this point, I just need approval of this evening's agenda here again for October 22nd, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Philkins and Mr. Smith. Gregg.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bauman.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
Next, I just need approval of the September 24th, 2018 minutes. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review that. I saw no errors, I guess.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second.
Fent and Bauman. Bauman.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes.
We have no public hearings. We have no new business. Under old business, we have a presentation here this evening by Mr. Dean DeCraiger of DK Design Group. This is the final site plan review for the Cadillac Lofts LLC. Having read that, do I need him or you, sir?
I'll give the presentation, and then if Dean thinks anything was missed, or he wants to cover some more topics, he can feel free to do so.
Perfect. Okay. Floor is yours, sir.
Okay, as you probably remember, I think most of you were on the commission when we undertook the sketch plan, but this is a two-step process as part of a rezoning process. And it starts by filing a zoning, rezoning application along with a sketch plan. And the planning commission and city council has gone through that first hurdle already. So, we're kind of now at the tail end. The difference now is that the first go-around, but the sketch plan required a public hearing. The final site plan does not. But it still requires both planning commission and city council approval. And the dates that the planning commission and the city council approved that are up on the screen, being April 23rd and also May 21st of this year. The use that's proposed, it's a mixed-use project. There will be two four-story buildings. They'll be L-shaped. The first floor of both buildings are proposed to be commercial. The upper three floors of both buildings are planned to be apartment units, market rate. And you can see the square footages and the detailing of the apartments there. There would be a total of 84 apartments. 12 would be two-bedroom. 48 would be one-bedroom. And 24 would be efficiency apartments. This would be the site plan. I colorized a little bit of the things just to show you some key features. Some of the things that we looked at since we last left this. The buildings have not changed. The general site layout has not changed. They've added some landscape element and, you know, parking lot and street lighting. You see the lighting in the yellow denotations. You see some significant tree plantings in the center of the parking lot to offer some shading for the parking in there. As you recall, the, all the entry into the parking area that's going to be onsite is now proposed off of Shelby. And I've shown the two entrance and egress drives in the blue, just so you can see where all movement in and onto and off the site would be taking place. And much of the area around the buildings will be kind of patio space and pedestrian circulation. There will also be a retaining wall that was necessary because of grade considerations between where the building grade had to be set and what the grade for the public sidewalk would be. The parking for the site, consistent with what kind of a national trend is, is our zoning ordinance really for parking was written for more or less a one-size-fits-all, and it really was kind of skewed towards a suburban setting. And so, there was a requirement for two cars per apartment unit. And there was no gradation in that requirement. But the current thinking now is because of more use of transit, more walkability, especially in a downtown setting, that the same amount of parking that historically had been required is no longer needed. In fact, some communities have literally thrown out their parking standard and let the developer actually propose it. I more or less felt it was more appropriate to trim back the parking requirement, probably to in half. And in fact, in this case, the developer is proposing more than that. I was going to require the 139 spaces, and the developer is proposing 178 spaces. They feel that is what's necessary to make the project successful in terms of the parking. I'll go back to the site plan. The parking area in gray that you see, which is directly behind the buildings, that will largely just be the parking for the tenancy and the apartments. And the parking for the commercial will rely heavily on the on-street parking. The city is looking at its own independent project to rework all the parking around the block. That would be on virtually every side, trying to maximize the space available and also improve the design to make it safer. So, we will see a slight uptick or increase in parking on the street, and it should be a safer type of design as well. In addition to what's provided onsite, on the block where the buildings are being built, you will also have additional spaces. I think it's about 42 spaces, which is just to the, is on the right side of that drawing, not in the color, which is an area which is staying in the OS 2 district, but is part of that parking that's being made available for commercial purposes for the project. And finally, you can see here that the building materials proposed are a variety of masonry and has the different complexity that was required by the ordinance. You can see the large amount of glass in the lower-level space, trying to be designed and suited for retail restaurant, a variety of commercial uses. One of the things that Dean and I have talked about is kind of take a wait-and-see on tenancy, and perhaps we could add a few more breakthroughs on the retaining wall to facilitate pedestrian movement of people walking along Mitchell, to feel invited to, you know, go up and approach the buildings and if there's retail uses or whatever, to feel comfortable going up there and seeing the product lines that might be available in the stores. So, at this point, I think, you know, I'm satisfied that the site plan has met all the ordinance requirements. And I am making a recommended motion that the planning commission approve the final site plan and recommend the rezoning and the final site plan approval by the council. And there was just a few conditions, and to my knowledge, I don't think the developer has any issue with these. If he does, he can say something. But essentially, that we continue, as he indicated in his letter that was in your packet, to work with city staff on the openings and the retaining wall. One of the things that we decided was in our mutual best interest was for Shelby Street to be dedicated back to the city. And so, the developer has proposed the recommended delineation of where those railway lines would be, and that's included on the plan. And I think that's probably a very good scenario, given that 100% of the access now is going to be off of Shelby Street. Our engineer had a couple items, recommended a little, I think, different gravel type, which I'm not an expert on. If you need to know about it, maybe Dean could explain it. And then there was a detail needed for a fabric drain also, which I'm not real familiar with. And just that the final connections to all the city's utilities be approved by the utilities department. The utilities department has met twice with the developer, is comfortable with the direction they're going, is comfortable with the mains that they're going to tap to provide service, has indicated that the service is adequate to supply all utilities to the building. And then, one of the things that is required by the ordinance itself is that the city and developer enter into a development agreement. Our past project with Terry D. was rather involved and had a lot of shared type of things. I think this one would be a lot simpler and probably would not be a very complex document to put together, but nonetheless, the ordinance requires it, so we would just have to take care of that final element. But with that, I'll let Dean fill in whatever he feels appropriate.
Good evening. I'm Dean DeCraiger with the DK Design Group. John, I think, has done a pretty thorough job of telling you what's going on. The items that he mentioned were really of no contention. We've been working through those items with him as discussed. The one issue as far as retaining walls or barriers along the primarily Mitchell Street and then heading to the east is an issue of that site. It's hard to believe, but across that site from east to, from east to west, there's nearly nine feet of drop across that site. So, what happens, what we're talking about is, in order to make the grades work so that we can get in and out of the buildings, by the time we get out to the sidewalk at Mitchell Street, we've got some grade issues. And we really don't want to put just a continuous set of steps all the way around because slip and fall is the biggest hazard we've got, especially in northern Michigan. So, what we are intending to do is put a retaining wall where we need it, which if we have restaurants and things like that, especially if they have any kind of liquor license, there's going to need to be some control anyway. But we will indeed put openings in those as it fits best once those first-floor tenants are selected and determined so that we can get easy access in and out. But the last thing we want is to have a hazardous situation. The only other thing, I guess, I really wanted to mention is just a little bit of discussion about the phasing of this project. Where we're at right now is we're hoping to, in the very near future, bid out some of the demolition on that site. We are currently waiting for some MEDC grants to come through, which will be part of the develop, or the demolition costs. Once those come through, we will totally demolish the former Prevost Building and the Emmington Insurance Building. The G and D Pizza will operate as it is. Part of the whole demolition phase will be to keep access for that business open at all times for them until they, at some time next summer, move to another site. So, then we will do Phase 1, which will be the north side of the site, and as soon as it's practical, we would move into Phase 2, which would be the south side. So, I think that's it in a nutshell. I'm open to questions if you have them as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Got a question for you.
Sure.
Are you going to maybe put some cuts in that retaining wall so they can get to the retail establishments from the sidewalk? Is there going to be a sidewalk on the backside of that retaining wall?
Yes, there is. There will be the Mitchell Street sidewalk, and on the backside, there will be patio space. The intent is to have a lot of, those triangular areas between the sidewalk and the building will all be patio space. The intent is to have sitting space, for restaurants have outside dining space, and then also walkway if it becomes retail. And definitely, we are going to put some accesses through those, but where they're going to be is still to be determined.
Is this going to be along the west and north, or is it going around the whole?
The retaining wall, the retaining is primarily on the west, north, and south. And actually, the buildings, as they move from west to east, the east end of the buildings will actually have retaining walls as part of their foundation. The grade will be coming up onto the building, but then we will not have retaining walls along the sidewalk. Does that make sense?
And then if I understood or read it or something, then that's gated off, meaning so far as other people, other places to park, that the shaded gray area is, no, no.
Correct. That'll be resident only. You'll need a key fob to get into the gate. That will be gated at each of those drives. But as John said, we will be gaining parking spaces on the north, east, and south sides of that block. There's already parking on the west side, but that parking is also going to be made a little bit wider so that you're out of traffic a little more as you get in and out of your car, crossing the movie theater. And then also, as John pointed out, the parking lot that is currently to the northeast of the site will be maintained as a parking lot by modern man or in that lot there. That'll stay there.
Any height issues on building? Because we just had a four-story issue.
No, there's, well, there's no problem from ordinance perspective.
Sorry?
There's not a problem from an ordinance perspective.
Anybody have anything else for David?
Dean called him the wrong name.
That's what I would call that word.
Parking lot in parcel 2, that is tied in, so that that is not going to be developed or could be developed later?
Well, it could be developed later, but then the discussion would be, you know, how do, we come to terms with the parking for the overall project. You know, it's being tied to this approval, so if it were to be developed, they would have to offer, either prove that that parking wasn't needed, or that it was being provided in a different manner.
In essence, we'd have to do an alteration to the MPUD at that point anyway.
Right.
I'd make the recommended motion.
I'll second it. Any conditions?
None for me. I mean, besides those that are laid out in the recommended motion.
So, what, 1 through 6?
1 through 6.
Not that it's probably a deal breaker, but Dean, you, 21 AA versus 21A?
What they're talking about is the gravel subgrade aggregate. Basically, what we're finding with the soil borings is that some of that soil is not as good load-bearing as others, and that's a little bit more binding. It really isn't a problem to us. We've discussed that with the engineer already. So, and actually, I thought it was picked up on the drawings, so.
Oh, it is on the drawings?
I think we picked it up on there.
Oh, okay. Well, then, maybe we, if it's on the drawings, then we probably can take that off as a condition then.
It's not a problem either way.
Anybody seconding Mr. Bunce? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Bunce.
That's good.
I'm sorry. I'm dizzying out.
The first motion was?
Myself.
Joe. Okay. Bauman.
Yes.
Philkins.
Yes.
Bunce.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Gregg.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Fent.
Yes.
Putman.
Yes. Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Dean. Hopefully, the monies come in and can start moving.
We are, as I said, in discussions with the MEDC right now. A CDVG grant is coming through, Community Development Block Grant, which will help make some of this cash flow. It is a tight-margin project, but we think there's a lot of potential, and just looking forward to it. I mean, Cadillac needs this, and I think it'll be a great development, just to continue to bring that energy downtown that we're seeing all around, but we're excited about it. Hopefully, if all goes well, we'll be starting construction on Phase 1 as soon as weather breaks in the spring, if we can get demolition started yet this fall, so we'll see what happens.
You did see what it did Saturday, right?
Huh?
You did see whether, what it did Saturday?
Actually, no, I didn't.
Or you were gone?
I watched the Michigan wins.
Oh, there's a couple on the board.
Could I take back?
Obviously, you weren't at the game.
Thank you very much.
That was good. Okay. I got it here somewhere, somewhere. We have, under old business, Option B, we have proposed amendments to zoning ordinance regarding homeless shelters. I see some familiar people in the audience about that. So, but having read that, Mr. Wallace, please.
Yes, the New Hope Shelter came in to meet with me recently, and they've been working through some logistical administrative things with their mission and how they best can meet their mission. And they've had some offers regard, in regards to land and new support. And it's caused them to rethink how they, how they can best serve the homeless population. And they're switching from independent facilities, meaning family shelters, men shelters, women's shelters, and now they're looking at going to a consolidation where all of those shelters would be placed together within one facility, and they would set up the management and access such that it worked to have perhaps those different shelters and different wings of a central facility. And given that change, we needed to write new language into our zoning ordinance because we hadn't envisioned that type of thing. So, essentially, we created this idea of a combination group slash family shelter, so whether it would be, you know, we could consider both types of facilities under our definitions in the zoning ordinance. And so, we just essentially went through the ordinance, redefined some things, rethought out what districts might be best for those shelters. I think we've limited the districts they can be considered into RM 1 and RM 2. And so, we, in meeting with the New Hope, they felt that the changes that are represented here would be satisfactory in meeting the pathway that they're on. And so, I think that's where we're at with it now. If you'd like, you could have them kind of fill in some of the background on why the change in direction and the importance of this change in direction. But tonight, we don't have to take an action on it because we're required to have a public hearing on the ordinance changes. We weren't able to quite notice this in time for this meeting. So, what would happen is your very next meeting, we will have a public hearing on this, all these changes that are before you, and would have to make a decision at that time. If that goes forward, then the site that they're kind of locking onto, I think, would require a rezoning. So, we would have the ordinance amendments be completed, then a rezoning of the property, and then finally, a special use permit for the, this new type of shelter. So, all the operational considerations that we worked through before and how the facility is managed and maintained, all those requirements all stayed the same, and you would expect the same level of service as we reviewed before. It's more just now that it would be a larger facility, but not so many locations.
Right. And due to the, them being all at the same location, thus that's where some of the verbiage has changed, because then we have, what, 150 feet or whatever?
Well, we had a limitation of 16 beds because we were considering only men's shelters in a vacuum and not looking at, you know, the fact that you might have families, men and women in the same facility.
Maybe at this stage, to hear what they have to say, everybody good with that?
I'd agree.
Okay. Hi there.
I'm Mark Morgan. I'm on the board, and I think many of you are somewhat familiar with the shelter. We've been in town for 26 years. When we were here just a year or so ago, we were looking at a men's shelter that was in a really old house, and we needed more space. Since that time, we've visited a lot of shelters. We've looked at the Saginaw one, the Midland one, the Holland one, the Traverse City one. And what they said to us, where we have these shelters with five independent houses, trying to coordinate all those needs and all those efforts, they said, "How do you do it? I don't know how you do it." And the big plus to putting everything together is basically for our guests, for our clients. You know, we coordinate with a whole lot of agencies. And we also go to probably, I think there's seven monthly meetings between different agencies, Consortium of Care, the Food and Rescue Shelter Agency, HUD, HARA, HIPAA, just a lot of them that we coordinate with. And to have all those, our new design plans on having a conference room in that area, but even more so, just to have those agencies know where they can contact our clients, you know, and that, and we'd have smaller conference rooms there too, so that if they wanted to come and meet with those clients, as opposed to saying, "Well, we've got this, this family's over here, and this person is over here," and run around town. It also helps give us better oversight of these, of our, of our guests there. And it also helps us to, the many things that we do, you know, to try to give you, I mean, the big picture, we're providing food at all those places, you know, running around fresh milk to five different locations. It's just to get down into the minutia of it and that kind of thing. So, staffing, oversight, it helps to reduce some of that staffing and oversight. And it'll, we do provide counseling too. And so, everyone that comes to our shelter meets with a counselor once a week, and everyone that comes with our shelter, our goal is to get people into housing and end homelessness. And that counselor meets with them, and everyone that's there knows that they have to be looking for housing and looking for jobs. And every week, they meet with that counselor, and "How are you doing?" And going on with that. So, as I probably get into too many different directions, but it was a revelation for us as a, as a board, and many of our board members are here tonight, to take a look at what's going on in, in many shelters around us. Like I said, all those other shelters around us, Saginaw, Midland, Holland, Traverse City, are either in one large building with, you know, doors, card keys, or men are here, women are there, families are... are there, families are a different spot, but all in the big building. If they're not in the same building, it's like a building just at the next door, you know, down the block. And again, it is just to consolidate those services. To give you a quick picture of what our guests, our clients are, you know, the average person stays 30 days. Seventy percent of the people are out in less than 90 days, or all are out in 90 days. Seventy percent are out in about 30 days or so. So, and a good portion of the people use homeless shelters one time in their life. It is... It's over 60 percent that use them one time in their life and never come back. So, we're not... It's not a long-term thing, you know, and to have all those independent people and get people set up in those places is a little difficult. Hope I didn't confuse you too much on that, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, or maybe it could have someone else.
So, you're gonna downsize from five?
Yeah. Yeah. We're gonna downsize, especially the four really old houses that we have in town. Two of them are leased from the hospital and two we own. We're going to move out of those, sell the ones we own, hopefully, and no longer lease those ones to the hospital. And it's... Yeah, it's not... It's not unlike if you had rental places or something, you know, you have nice new ones or 120-year-old ones, and many of them, you know. It's just... It's just that it's a... It's a place where financially, it's a struggle for us, just to maintain that, maintain the staff and the oversight of those areas. So, we're hoping for that improvement, and we're also hoping that all of the agencies that work with us know where they can come and find our guests. There are also phone calls, as we have, we can, you know, here they are, this type of time, and set up a schedule, and have conference rooms, large one for bigger meetings, couple of small ones, so if that case manager wants to come from the Consortium of Care and meet with this individual, they can do it right there at our spa, you know. So...
So, I can't remember. There's a lot about this that I do remember from the last time that you were all here, but it says that you're going to be going to 60 beds?
We've... That's just more of a future number. Right now, we can hold, I think it's 46 or 45.
In total, though?
In total, yeah.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
If this would help accommodate more people?
It's not truly the intention. The intention is to put them all together. But we were... Yeah. We were advised that it would be good to go for the 60 number, although it's not... You know, we've been in town for 26 years, and we have some good data on the numbers that we need. And again, don't... We don't want to think that we want to house more people. We don't. We want to get people into housing quicker, and that's the purpose of putting it all together, so that these people are... have easier access, and the providers have easier access to our people. They know where they are, you know, and...
Just logistically, just having everybody more consolidated for management, people to meet?
Yeah.
Where you keep an eye on things. So, obviously, you're looking to build.
Yeah.
And where?
Oh, well, we have a purchase agreement with Nazarene Church on some property that is contingent upon getting approved, you know, through all this. It's right next to the new jail. If you know where the water kind of retention pond is, it's the L-shaped peeps around that. So, you know, you're... This is the first step on a long process, as I understand. First, there's this new ordinance, which we add to that.
One thing that Mark hasn't mentioned yet is HMIS is our main...
Jim Ransom.
Is our main funding.
Let's pick up the...
HMIS is our main funding, and our budget is fairly small, and they are pushing us towards 24-hour, being open 24 hours. Right now, we can't afford to staff that, but maybe part of this consolidation will help us be able to do that.
The other big piece about 24 hours is, you know, when people find jobs that are, you know, at rock bottom, they're usually on second, third shift, so it'd be, you know, great to have them stay out of the cold and have a good place to stay.
I know that all of the discussions that we went through, that was probably one of the most emotional things that I've ever had to go through, being the mayor.
For many of us, too.
I know. I was there with you.
Yeah.
I know. It was emotional for everyone.
Yeah.
But I'm sitting here, and I'm listening to this, and I just think, you know, so many times in life, it doesn't go the way that we want it to, and it ends up being really a better place.
Mm-hmm. I think so.
Because we weren't allowed to do it the way we thought was the right way the first time.
Yeah. Yeah, it gave us a chance to, you know, regroup and come back together, and we also are now a member of a... It's called CityGate. It's a network of 400 rescue missions in the country, and, you know, they've been a nice resource for us, too. And so, they... You know, they're alongside us with this endeavor, and they think it is truly the right way to go.
Yeah, how about accessibility for folks coming and going? I mean, most people are walking. Of course, we do have bus system.
Yeah. You know, it is around that backside of Platt Road and out 55, so for buses and those kind of things, that there's access for that. We do provide vouchers when people are, you know, gonna go, you know, make their lives better, look for housing, look for... Look for jobs. Occasionally, some people have cars, but there's not, you know... You know, they don't...
Yeah.
It's a small majority of them that have vehicles. It'll... You know, there's... Yeah, that's probably the walking thing is what you'll... What we'll see. Yeah, I'm down that way. There's more sidewalks there than in many places in town, so it's not a bad route. I mean, this is just the first step in many things, so I... And I... As I'm... You're more in tune to the process than I am, but there's this ordinance, which is a public hearing, then there's the rezoning. It's just an R1 right next to the jail right now, so we're looking for either RM1, RM2. So, that's another public hearing, I think. And then, then we go to the city council and do this again for another two, so it's a total of four public hearings, if I'm understanding that right, and then a special use permit after that. So, is it four or five?
Right. It would be one before the planning commission, one before the council for the rezoning, and then the same thing for rezoning the land, so that's four, and then a fifth one for the special use.
Seems like a lot, but...
It is.
Pretty friendly group. Yeah.
We're gonna know it really well by the end.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. So, yeah, tonight's, we can ask anything and everything because it's not a public hearing, and this is to make ourselves more familiar when this hits public hearing, which will be next month, but as John mentioned earlier, too, it's just to... We're mentioning things in general about the rezoning, so it's not a specific location at all, so those people will not be notified, if I understood that right, sir?
Right. The notice with regard to the ordinance change will be a general notice to the community at large because we really don't know theoretically at this time what it would apply to, and ultimately, when they go through the rezoning, then people would be notified of the rezoning, and then they could look into why it's being rezoned, and then subsequently, they have the opportunity, when we get to the special use process, to be notified individually. So, basically, at this time, you're looking at this language, and you're saying, "Am I happy with the new wording? Am I happy with the districts that were chosen?", and that type of thing. And if you are, then we look at it from that perspective rather than how it applies to a given site. But if you... You know, if anyone sees anything that gives them pause in the way it's worded, it would be nice to maybe, you know, hear about it before we get to the next month's meeting so that we could maybe take a look at some more things, if you thought we needed to take a look at some more strategies for this.
John, in the list of special uses in the district allowed that you gave us, there's a family shelter just above the group shelter, the third one from the bottom, and the family shelter says R1 is acceptable for that, and I was wondering why maybe not here at this... So, it says family shelter, R1, R2, a bunch of different things, but then, when we get down to... And the group shelter has RM1, and I'm wondering why the combination isn't... Is the one and not the other one? Why we didn't put R1 in there maybe as a place?
You're looking under...
Well, that list you gave us on the sheet...
On the top page?
Page two of the...
Page two.
Of the red line.
So, the bottom three are the ones I'm looking at, the family shelter, group shelter, then the combination one, which is the new one.
The authorization section.
I think it has to do with... Well, historically, the family shelters singly would have been single-family homes, and I think we're looking at the RM1 and RM2 being more focused on multifamily development. So, I think that would be the reason for that. And the reason, you know, while family shelters were allowed in the single-family districts, it was added to after the combination because now they're being combined in the same facility, and we just wanted people to recognize that, you know, they're being put together. You know, I guess the other good thing about they're looking at 24-hour management is when we did go through the public hearings before, one of the issues came up was people, when they had to be out of the facility, if it was an extended time, being in stores or other facilities, or the library, or whatever the case might be, and perhaps now, under this new direction, there would be much less occurrence of that in terms of people's concerns from a business perspective.
Will you still have the same policies? I mean, your original policies, where they had to be out like at nine or something like that? Will those policies change then, based on what John was...
It's our intention to get there. If we get there right from the beginning, maybe not, but it is our intention to get the 24-hour coverage. In this ordinance, we have 18-hour coverage, which means it's six hours, possibly not, but it is definitely our intention to get to 24. We definitely see a lot of people that come, and they end up with those second and third shift jobs, and it's really not, you know, good for them or respectful for them to have to send them out, but it is... This will definitely help with our finances and make it easier for us to staff that one facility 24 hours, as opposed to five facilities.
But they'll still be encouraged to...
They definitely will be encouraged, and they'll always be tasked every week to go out looking for jobs, looking for housing. We'll have some computer stations there, but the library does have computer stations, so if they're looking for jobs and housing, that's an option for them, just like anyone else, I guess, to go in and look at those things in there. But I think you're right in your assessment, John, that there'll be less of that. Less of that, you know, coming downtown and hanging out. I don't know how well you know. I mean, we know these people, so we know when we see people in town hanging out that belong there. But on the positive side, I don't think there's a week goes by that I don't meet somebody that has spent time in our shelter, and they're either at the cash register, or I actually asked for a... Talked to a manager at one of our box stores, a shift manager, and came out, and I said, "You look familiar." And he says, "Yeah, Mark, I was at the shelter there." And I also was at Secretary of State just last week, and right next to me was another gentleman who's now, you know, obviously got a car, got a job at BorgWarner, and got a place. So, it's... There's a lot of people in town that are helped by it, and even while we go through this process, it's still paying dividends and being a good benefit to our community, I think.
Mike Villiamany, I'm with McCurdy, Wotilla, and Portius in town, and I've been working with the group. I think it's important to just understand that at this point, all the exciting kind of things that you're hearing tonight is really not possible within the ordinance as it's written, and with just a few minor changes, with John's help, we're able to, you know, adapt to this ordinance. All the protections that are already there with the special use permit condition analyses that you'll do is still there, but we're just trying to get off this first mark first.
Oh, yeah. Thank you for that, Mark. But... Good? Good? You're good? Everybody good? Let's say, nice just information for us before...
I like the way it's going.
We're bombarded, and we have a very nice preview of just... No, honestly, just a lot of language changes a little bit. Think we can help them with that. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Wallace, then?
That is it for tonight.
When are they gonna start paving?
Well, best guess, probably about three or four days from now. Tomorrow isn't supposed to be good weather-wise. There's one more adjustment to the base that needs to be made, and that'll take a day or two, so I think we're probably three or four days out, and then it should be underway.
Any other board member comments? Is the... That one thing's been beyond the 10 days, or do they go back at that?
They're back after. They just gotta get the contractor back, whatever.
Perfect.
The asbestos removal down at Better Bodies, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And they've got most of it out of there now.
Next to Lark, yeah. Okay. It's all good. Any other board member comments?
Well, I spent the whole day up at Hagerty Center today with Mike Coy for the... At Housing Summit that was up there. That was very useful.
Good.
It had a lot of information, and there's folks all over the state, running into all kinds of unique ways of getting over the hurdles that need to be gotten for housing for folks and showing the necessity for market-based and affordable housing across the board, and we fall woefully short. And so, whatever is done in a way of getting affordable housing built or found or managed somehow or another is an important step to do in any community. So, there's a lot of information. That's all I can say.
Glad you could make it, because most of us were... You're retired, aren't you?
Forty-five years.
Okay. And the rest of us, okay. No other communications, I figure. Any public comments? We're doing really good. Other business and other than that, we can all go. Thank you. We're out.